We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 30. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Araza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Salfa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley. Uwer. Serone. Vogelsinger.
Here.
Fourteen here tonight. And up next will be a reminder to please peek directly into the microphone if you're sitting in front of one. And item three is approval of the minutes for January 23rd, 2024. Get a motion?
Second. A second, Dan.
Okay. Motion by Dan, second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any items to be added, removed, or changed tonight?
So we've got an executive session down there, don't we?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay, can we add an executive session for purchase of real estate? Thank you.
Okay. And can I get a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Remove.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by Salfa, second by Lehman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have an executive session. And then next would be matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I don't see anybody online, and I don't see anybody in the room. Okay, we'll move right on then to the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 24-14-R approving a task order number 42 with engineering enterprises in for construction engineering services to the 2023-24 lead and galvanized steel water service replacement project. Resolution 24-15-R for the new police vehicle. Resolution 24-16-R, that's task order number 10 for Baxter Woodman for GIS water field utility data. Our resolution 24-17-R authorizing a purchase of a passenger vehicle for Public Works and for information tech departments. And then ordinance 24-12, that's amending the city code to allow for happy hours. I remove that we approve the agenda as read.
Okay. By Chanset, second by Salfa.
Alan, can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
So I was actually surprised to see the happy hour on the consent agenda, but I'm not upset about it. I'm just glad we're moving forward with making the change and getting aligned with the state law, so.
Sounds good. I just put it there because there was unanimity in the decision.
Can we, that reminds me, thank you. Can we just run through that real quick so I have clarity on exactly what was changed? I did get a call on it and
Sounds good.
Shame on me, I didn't have super clear.
So prior to the state back in, I believe, 2015, removing the prohibition against happy hours, our ordinance had been tracking along with the state ordinance, and so it was written exactly as the state ordinance was prior to 2015. So it appears that we just did not change ours in 2015 when the law changed to allow happy hours, but with some other restrictions. And so we've changed the verbiage in our ordinance now just to say, check the state statute. As long as people are abiding by the things there, then it's okay with us, too.
So Batavia, for all intents and purposes, for the land, it still offers, you can have a happy hour in Batavia.
That is correct, but prior to us making this change, you couldn't.
Interesting.
There was a certain provision that said happy hours prohibited, and it said that you couldn't charge a different price for drinks during a set period of time because of the, you know, chance of over-consuming, you know, encouraging people to over-consume during a short period of time.
I had a phone call that was, it seemed they maybe took it backwards, whatever language was sent out. Okay, you guys maybe got them, too.
We've got some feedback, too, that, you know, the people who received the letters, it said that, under our code, it is already prohibited. But the, kind of the word on the street that got out there was, why did the city of Batavia decide this year that we're gonna ban happy hours?
Yeah, that's exactly
Because there were a lot of people out there that were having happy hours, which the purpose of the letter that we sent out was just, there were some things that we saw people weren't following, and we wanted to remind them of what the rules were. And so then when we receive the feedback from businesses and Main Street and from city council that we prefer just to track along with what the state requires, that's why we made the change.
Perfect. Thanks for bringing that up, Lee.
Sure.
I think one of the things I was gonna bring up, the other was the cars that we're looking at purchasing. I think it's a good idea to, you know, definitely go with the hybrids, and it's just frustrating that there aren't them available through the purchase plans or anything else.
Dan, go ahead.
I think it should be a federal law that everybody should have to work at least one year in the food service, beverage service industry. Having happy hours redefined or this acknowledgement is so important, and I'm glad that we're talking about it, it's absolutely appropriate to be on the consent agenda, so thank you for that. And furthermore, if we find a situation like this where we can get ahead of something and do social media posting, maybe we could have done like a quick straw poll, hey, we're gonna bring our ordinance in line with the state and do a quick social media post to remind people these are what the rules are, that might have gotten ahead of some of what I heard as well, too. People were like, are you guys banning happy hours? No, that's not what's going on. If anything, people run these things responsibly. Having worked happy hours, it truly is a happy hour, and it's a great tool for businesses. A lot of organizations, companies might let out a little bit earlier, impromptu networking events have happened, and gone to some of these things, they're so valuable. So thank you for everything that staff did to get this moving forward.
Okay. On the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hot mic. Okay, then we will move on to item seven, which is Resolution 2024-013-R authorizing execution of notice to intent award for the 23-24 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement project to Five Star Energy Services. Good evening, Gary.
Good evening, thank you. If you recall, this past summer, we completed our first phase of lead-water service replacements, and that was done with a forgivable, 100% principal forgiveness loan through the state. We're very lucky now in that we are still able to obtain low-interest loans through the state. The law is still kind of being finalized, but right now, there is a possibility that it may allow for loans to be executed at terms of 0% interest rates. So we're, stay tuned, we may still be coming back to you in the future with additional projects in order to expand upon taking advantage of 0% interest. So for this, for this tonight, though, we are recommending award to Five Star Energy Services. We have checked their references, and they did submit the lowest bid, which was only slightly lower than the second lowest bidder, but we have verified that they are the qualified lowest bidder, and that's our recommendation then. This is just a notice of intent to award, and this is part of the IEPa low-interest loan process. So you're going to approve the notice of intent to award, and then in the future, the next couple of weeks, we'll be coming back to you for an actual award. I have never understood the process, but that's what the process is. Yeah.
Is it the same company that provided services last year?
No, it is not.
The company is different.
Yeah, it is a new company. In fact, I made reference to the second lowest bidder, because that was the company that had provided services last year, so, yep.
Am I reading this right, that so their bid was 1.48, but we're basically saying it's likely gonna be little over two? So you're recommending, or am I reading that incorrectly?
Well, we are, we are, we are recommending that the city utilize its currently full allocation of loan funds that the state has said that we could use. So yes, they have bid 1.4. What we would do is add extra work onto that contract in order to utilize up to the full amount that the state has already said that we could have, thus taking advantage of as much free interest as we could take. And we may even come back, come back and ask you for more money, which would begin via 0% interest. So you are reading that right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't anticipating a $600,000 change order.
You are essentially anticipating
Well, sort of, yeah. Not out of their mistake.
Not because of any sort of mistake.
Otherwise, I'd say, let's look at the people who did it the first time.
And we also have engineering and design services, doesn't that part of the $2 million as well?
That, that was part of your consent agenda tonight.
Right, but that's part of the $2 million, though, isn't it? Or is just the two, is the $2 million just the construction work?
Yes, your second.
Okay, so it is, because I thought it said in here that it would also include
That include, the $2 million is part of, sorry, maybe I didn't understand
Which includes the design and construction engineering.
So it's part of your, part of the consent agenda tonight.
Right.
You and I went around in a circle, I did not understand what you're saying.
Okay, and that's what I was trying to get at, is it wouldn't be that 600, because there's already, was it 200 and something in the, in the engineering side of it? So essentially, 400.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we just didn't take the low bid, and they're saying with their professional eye, hey, guys, this is gonna be a lot more than 1.4. We suggest, you know.
It happens with the street depart, or with the street replacement program and sidewalks and curb work and stuff. If you end up with a lower price, a lot of times, we use the budgeted amount to expand it if it's a good deal.
Sure.
Yeah, and these, these prices, through our consulting engineer, engineering enterprises, they're, they're really surprised by these prices. And again, the second lowest bidder, who was our contractor last year, who we know to be a very good bidder, was a very small number away from this contractor. So we know the prices are just competitive, yeah.
Gary, if the two bids were very similar, then is there any benefit with going with contractor that we've already used in the past?
We explored that, there's a, there's, there is a legal requirement for municipalities to award to the lowest responsible bidder. So the municipality would have to determine that the lowest bidder is not a responsible bidder. That's just the way the law is. And we, we actually explored that with our own city attorneys, and again, getting references and getting experience, there's nothing to suggest that the lowest bidder was not a responsible bidder. Yeah.
Other questions? I will make the motion that we recommend to council, Resolution 2024-13-R authorizing execution of the notice of intent to award the 23-24 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement project to Five Star Energy.
Dan has his hand raised.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Just a quick question on eligibility for getting access to these funds. I know that back, what was it, probably six, seven years ago, when we asked in Springfield, we first heard about the money that was gonna be available, but we weren't sure how much of that pie we were going to get. It feels like we've gotten two healthy servings of the state funding for this pie, to the point that other municipalities were, were like, how'd y'all do that? Do we have any idea on how many households we're gonna be able to cover? I hate to put you on the spot here, but I'm just curious, do we know how many households won't be eligible for state funding, or is there anything any households can do to get in line, be ready? Is there any way that we can put the word out to help you guys and help staff to make sure as few people have to chip in their own funds and take advantage of this program while we haven't?
There's about 10 questions there, Alderman.
I'm sorry.
No, it's good. It's, it's, it's very good information. First of all, we are extremely fortunate to have gotten the funds that we received last year. We're extremely fortunate to be able to get the $2 million, which has really already been allocated to us, and again, potentially even more money which might be coming to us. As you noted, going forward, we have basically zero anticipation of receiving any more funding. The funding will no longer be going to communities like ours. So we need to take advantage of it while we have the ability to do so. Also, at 0% interest, you're not gonna see that again. So that's, that is one aspect of it. We have tried our darndest to reach out to homeowners who potentially may have lead services. We know, we've sent multiple postcards, multiple postings on our websites, meetings like this, and some homeowners have never even responded once. So it's very difficult to, you know, to, to reach everyone. I think we're gonna have approximately 500, well, that's with the extra money. If we get the extra money, we're gonna knock out about probably 500 more services, lead services. And after last year and this year, if we get that extra money, we'll have knocked out a vast majority of our lead services. Will there still be some remaining? The answer is undoubtedly yes. Under the state law, those people then could be charged to replace their service. But I think it's probably, and this is a call, a policy decision on behalf of city council, I think it'd probably be difficult for city council to say, you people now have to pay for yours, and the other 500 people over here got it for free. So what we were thinking of doing in accordance with the state law is we have to set up a long-term plan, and if we get all the money that we're planning on getting, then over the next decade plus, it's probably gonna take that long, we're gonna do 15, 20 a year and knock out the remainder of all the services, probably just at the city's cost as part of normal work over the next 10, 15 years. That's probably how we'll handle it, and that way, Alderman, nobody has to pay out of pocket, it's equitable to everyone who has received a new service, it's just gonna take a little bit longer time-wise.
Thank you for walking us through that. I certainly agree.
That long-term plan, would that correspond to street works that would happen at the same time to just combine all that work together, would you say?
We'll try to be able to coordinate that more in future years when it's just us doing our own, our own services, and we can control more with our internal crews, yes, those two would definitely be coordinated. When you have a full-scale project like we do now, there isn't necessarily full coordination like we just did. The most, one of the most visible areas is down East Wilson Street, where we have a number of patches, that's not on the street program, but it was 20 lead service lines that we were able to replace with free money, so.
I also just wanted to point out that all of this is being done while last November, the IEPa announced that they are formulating plans for mandating the replacement of lead service lines. Over the course, I think one of the proposals that they had was 10% per year with all of them eliminated within 10 years. So we're really getting the jump on this so that it will be a much more manageable project for the city of Batavia. And again, kudos to Superintendent Jeremy Barkey and his team
Jeremy, you're a great
who have pursued this, and like you said, other community, like Alderman Chanset said, other communities were like, hey, how'd you do that? Because the first round was $4 million in forgivable loan. You know, this, and then this is another 2.1 in 0% loan.
Gary, am I right in assuming that most of the lead that we still have in town is in kind of the older neighborhoods surrounding the downtown?
Generally speaking, that's where you're going to find it. Generally speaking, homes built from 90s and on won't have any lead. I believe lead, lead in solder was outlawed in 1987. So homes built before 1987, even though they may not have a lead line coming to their house, they may still have lead in their solder or lead in the service lines, so that, that still could, could be problematic. But generally speaking, the older homes, homes, you know, from the turn of the century all the way up into the early 80s, late 70s, could, could be candidates for lead.
I mean, I think we could maybe kind of define it as Van Nortryk Avenue on the west side and College Street on the east side, or, yeah, College Street on the east side. That's coming toward the river in both areas is where most of the lead pipes still exist. And of course, that's the older parts of town, and the water system in Batavia, John Dillon's written a terrific book about the whole thing.
Yeah, he did a great job.
And the whole thing started, Batavia had a couple referendums in the early 1890s to put in a water system, and it got voted down. And then on January 10th of 1893, they had a fire at the east side school, and thank God, all the kids got out, because the fire started up in the chimney from some coal or something that came out of the chimney and started the roof on fire. But Batavia didn't really have a fire department of any size or equipment, and they didn't have a water system. So basically, the building, fire started at the top, and today, you'd easily put that out, and that would be the end of it. But they literally stood there, so I've been told by people who are my relatives and who are there, they stood there and took a couple hours, but they watched the building burn from the top down. And the whole thing was totally destroyed, although all the kids got out. Well, that really sent a shockwave through Batavia that they had done that, and as a result, they went to another referendum, I think, be the following April, and it passed overwhelmingly. I mean, everybody said, we've, we've had our near miss here, we don't want to repeat this. And so immediately, you know, at that time, Batavia's eastern boundary was probably either Prairie Street or College Street, and the western boundary was probably not out to Van Nortryk yet, it was probably Mallory. And so those were the areas that got the early water system. And I know when we just got through out there playing around with the Main Street line out there, that was one of the original, original ones. And they, we had to get rid of all that, so I mean, there's an easy story to tell based on history here of why we have to do this, and it's obviously mandated and necessary for the health of everybody around, given what we've now found to be in lead-based, you know, pipes and whatever. So I commend our staff, we're really on top of this, but we're, we're dealing with the lingering phases of American history here of why we put it in to begin with and how we changed it when things really started getting to be notable that we needed a water system, so. Little history lesson.
I actually received a letter from another company talking about replacing my lead pipelines. So I think it'd be, if anybody else runs across residents that say they received it, I threw it away, because I'm like...
You're always gonna get solicitors, and, and anyone who's watching, to Alderman Chanset's point, anyone who's watching this broadcast tonight, if they have any questions, just give our water department a call. And you're right, you will get a third-party solicitor who will say, I need to replace your lead line, and somebody, somebody does it. There's not much we can do about that, but, but we try to educate people, make sure that they don't pay for it when we can, we can do it. Yeah.
Any other comments? Now, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then we will move on to item number eight, which is a discussion on information systems, project list, and resources.
Do you need me to stop, Chair?
So, couple of things I know that people asked for the last time, this is a follow-up discussion from November. And I'm not sure how much information you want to see or hear, but I did put together something on the, on the history of our staff, and I'll go through it quickly.
Can you share your screen so that Alderman Chanset can see it, too?
Yes.
Thanks. Perfect, thanks.
So I put something together just to go through, you know, where we, what we had back in the day when I first started and so forth. This is a current description of what we have. I'm on the top as a director, then we have, on one side, we have the IT side of the equation, we have Todd Davis, we have Ed Larson down below him, and Mike Mustard, who we just put on 2019. On the other side, we have the GIS side of our equation, we have Mike Kamen, and we have Matt Stocking. So that's what we currently have. If I can get this working right. There we go. So in 2007, we had five people in the department, and that was before the recession hit. We had two people in IT, plus myself, and we had two people in GIS. In 2010 through 19, because we were asked to let go of a few people, we couldn't rehire anybody, so we ended up with three people for quite some time. Got so bad before the budget process, or during the budget process in 2019, I asked Laura and Peggy for a meeting, and we talked about adding somebody, and we brought it to the city council later that evening. So we added a technician, which is Ed Larson. So in 2019, we added another person. Last year, we were fortunate to put on our GIS analyst, Matt Stocking, for GIS, and that was actually approved in 2022. We didn't, we weren't able to hire him until 2023, and then we added Mike Mustard, our technician, just probably about, I think he's been here about four months, five months. And this is what we're asking for, we're asking for an additional person, which is the future employee for the application specialist. So I wanted to go through that. And I also wanted to bring up, just to show you, the job description for this. And I believe that's it. There we go. So this, this position is a lot different than the previous positions that we've hired. On one side, we did hire Matthew, who is a GIS specialist. On the other side, on the IT side, we hired a technician to help us with infrastructure, installing computers, doing support. And, and that position's been working out really well. Mike's been doing a great job, he's got a lot of experience, and he's starting to learn and understand what we do and where things are, so that's been working out great. This position is more to help with some of our application work. Right now, we have one true good programmer in Todd. I, I dabble in it, but I haven't done much programming in many years. This person would bring somebody with some additional programming skills to us as, as a second person. I mean, if Todd's sick, or he can't come in, or there's a problem, it would be nice to have that other person. One of the things that this person would be able to help us with is implementation of projects, software projects. We have a number of projects, such as Laserfish, Viewworks, our permitting system, and Lama, we, we've got quite a bit going on, and I think this person would be able to, if we, if we find somebody with these type of skills, would be able to help us on that side of the equation. Pardon me. One, a couple of things that was asked of us, which I, I just recently addressed as the results of the two, of the new technician, and, well, well, that side of the equation's going well, we're starting to catch up with computers and getting support faster for people. The application side is still not moving the way we'd like. The other question that was asked was, can we see a copy of the project list? And for the techies who like looking at this, I hope you enjoyed it, and I, I can answer any questions. For the rest of you, my apologies. But I am here to answer any questions about that if you'd like, or are there any other questions or comments? Because I feel this, the city really needs to, to add somebody to the staff, and I
To add to what Howard was talking about in the conversations that I've had with him about how the department has evolved over the years. Back when Howard started back in 2007, the city had seven servers and now we have 50.
Yes, I actually started in 2002, but I just took from 2007 to show you the history. We, we had roughly about eight servers, seven or eight servers at the time. We have over 50 now. We had 130 computers when I started. We have roughly about 200, maybe a few more right now. We had what's called a flat network because we didn't have that many items or network devices on the network. Well, we grew so much, I, I don't know how many levels of networks we have right now. Quite a few, definitely over 12. We've taken over quite a bit of other areas. We took over the, or started implementing the SCADA infrastructure for both, or actually for electric, for, for water and wastewater. When COVID hit, we managed to get people working with remote access, which is still ongoing. And then I would say about three years ago, ransomware really hit. And that kind of changed everything we, we do. Besides spending a, a number of hours making changes to our network to try and defend ourselves, the priorities changed. And in the past, and I mentioned this in our staff meeting today, if a server was running and it was end of life, in other words, they stopped doing security updates for it, you know, 15 years ago, fine, it's running. It's not a problem. We were able to help on the application side, you know, so and so needs this done. Let's help them. Let's get that done. When ransomware started really hitting us, we had to flip the coin. And now we can't let end of life. Servers, I'll say operating systems, equipment, they, they, they just can't exist anymore. We have to keep them updated. We have to patch things and we have to defend ourselves. So we spent a lot of time working that side of the, the equation, implementing multi-factor. So now the application side is suffering. And, you know, based on that project list, it's, it's a little daunting. It's, it's a definitely a multi-year project list. And we'd really like to find a way to get through it because we, we get a lot of calls from the employees who can't get things done as easily without some of this technology working the way it should. So.
In the, before times when we didn't have a complex infrastructure to maintain, Howard and Todd had the time to support applications in departments. But now that the infrastructure has proliferated and is extremely complex, at the same time, the applications that each department are using, those are proliferating as well. So this is why the application position really would be helpful. In, in our employee survey, that was the one area. All the other areas were, you know, above average, but that one, employees said, I don't feel like I have the technology necessary to do my job the best that I could.
I know for my staff, it's, it does get a little frustrating because they want to provide good service. They want to give people the tools that they need to get the job done. And sometimes we just can't. It just, you know, no matter how, how long, how many weekends we come in, it's, it's just not always possible. So we, we really would like to add that person if we can. So I'm, I'm open to any questions on the project list or anything else.
I was surprised at how many projects there that aren't started or things that we have that we're not going, I guess, further with. You know, as I started to try to understand what was there, to me, it makes, you know, sense. And I guess I'd rely on some of the people that have more knowledge and, you know, the background on this. And I wish Mark was here too, you know, that I think this is an important step that I think we need to take if we're going to keep spending money on the stuff that we have. And then if it sits for a year but doesn't get installed and doesn't get the applications and everything on it that it needs, it's not money well spent. You know, and after I heard how much equipment we had that's at for so long, that just tells me that we're, we are behind in the personnel side of it to get it out there and usable.
I know that the, the comment came up about talking about hiring a new person and, and it taking multiple months or longer. And just so you all know, I've had a lot of conversations with Laura. They're not something I would come to you with until she supports it. But we've had conversations for quite a while on adding staff and being able to explore what else we can do and are there better ways and, and, you know, what, what other options are there? And, you know, I just think that having that other person in the long run is, is the best solution.
I agree, Alan. I think this makes sense. Our reliance on technology is certainly not going to decrease anytime in the near future. So making sure we're set up for success and we have the staff that's appropriate seems like the right thing to do.
I did have a comment from Mark Uer earlier. I think it was yesterday and I emailed him back and I haven't heard from him. So hopefully, you know, he was satisfied. I'm, I'm sure he would have emailed somebody if he wasn't, so.
I'll just say that, thank you for doing such a good job with a lean team over the years.
You're welcome.
And it's exactly that. I mean, I know obviously in the past, we've talked about numbers and what people are hired at or whatever, that, that doesn't take away, Sarah took the words out of my mouth. This is one sector that is not going to decrease. It's, it's going to increase and be a part of our life more and more and more. God knows where AI is going to take us and, and things like that. So, no, fully support it and, you know, just wanted to say thank you for fighting this, fighting the good fight for so long.
Thank you. I even think of, you know, the last item we talked about and how the public needs to be engaged and be able to know what's out there and how do we get that information to them? How do we get the responses back from them? How do we make it easier for somebody to go to the website and figure out, hey, is my house in an area that might be part of this? Or, you know, all those things, that should all be able to be done on your phone, you know, tablet, laptop, whatever you want. And, you know, 20 years or 20 plus years ago, when I got on the council, there was nothing like that, absolutely zero like that. You know, and now every six months or every year, it changes again on how, how far we have progressed. And, you know, I think we really need the support to make sure that the employees that we have and the equipment that we buy for them and the software program, everything that we do has to be utilized to whatever maximum it can. And if we can't do that, we're not helping.
Alan, can I make a quick comment?
I strongly support this. I mean, number one, the staff does an excellent job. But one thing you have to appreciate, if you're the mayor of this town, you quickly find out that we have a very large population of senior citizens. And the common comment to me is, Jeff, I graduated from high school before 1970 and I never saw a computer in any school classroom I was ever in. So they call up with a lot of different questions that the staff handles and sometimes they're old timers, so they get to me. And I immediately run to these guys, they're right next to my office there, but Howard and Todd, they come in and save the day. And, you know, you have to talk to these folks in a pretty basic language because they don't get a lot of this, but that's one of the challenges we have and the staff we have here now understands that and works with them. And one of the, one of the big crises at the moment in Batavia is, is that Homestead's TV store has closed. And that used to be the place where most people could call up and get Gene on the phone and say, why can't I get channel 32 or whatever? And he'd analyze it with them. So now Gene's telling me that he's not going to have the store, but if somebody really gets into trouble on the TV, I can refer, he's going to give me a number to refer to him and he'll, he'll call and talk to him for a couple of minutes about how they can find whatever it is they're looking for. Because the one said, the days of 257 and 9 are over. And I'm lucky if I can even get those on my set now. So there is a, there's a huge challenge and crisis in technology that's going on right now. And, you know, unfortunately, it's in the face of our senior citizens and they really need to have the backup and the support. So one of the sidebar roles that Howard and his staff provide is kind of the backup team to kind of work with some of those folks. And they're talking to them in the very basics of, of computer technology, but they do it and they get along quite well. So I'm all for it. The more we can do for that, the better off we are.
So, so there is not, you know, again, this is just a discussion. There really isn't a vote. If anybody is opposed to putting on the other position, then definitely would like to hear from them. If not, the next step would be talking to Wendy Benaric and having her look and see, you know, what's the appropriate salary for that position and bring back the wage and salary ordinance for you guys to approve.
Is it mid-year for this year if you wanted to move forward with this or would it end up?
It is in the budget already.
Yeah, it's already in the budget and, but in all likelihood, it would be two months before this person would be starting because we'd have to put it out there for three weeks to get applicants, another two or three weeks for interviewing people. They need to give notice to their current employer, so.
Probably looking at early spring sometime.
Yeah.
Is anybody opposed to going that route? Say, I think that, you know, this is something that I think we need to move forward with.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to item nine, which is a discussion on the final report on the 2021 to 2023 strategic action plan.
Okay. So as we are in the final stages of creating our new strategic plan, I wanted to share with you today.
I'll get it for you.
Oh, thank you very much. That's a little too tiny for everyone to see. It'll still be a little too tiny for everyone to see, but I just wanted to go over some of the highlights and I put it in a little bit of a different format than the ordinary updates that I did, but that has all been completed too. I'm really proud of the work that we were able to do towards accomplishing the targets that city council had set up in this plan. There are however, several things that were part of this plan that we weren't able to achieve that you'll see in the new strategic plan for 2024 to 2028. The first of our goals were in the category of economic vitality and the first one was to hire a business development manager and create an economic development strategic plan. When we identified these, we had a number of vacancies, both in our downtown and on Randall Road. And so one of the, unfortunately, the first person that we hired for economic development manager was only here for a short period of time. However, I, I would like to say that, you know, Anthony is really hitting it out of the park. And so the creation of an economic development strategic plan is one of the priority items for community economic development in our new strategic plan. And Anthony will be a critical part of that. We also had the second goal of actively marketing Batavia to new businesses. Together with Both End Productions, we came up with a wonderful video that we use to promote and attract business to our community. Even more so than said video, I think, again, Anthony Isom has done a wonderful job of cultivating the opportunities that come our way. And I know that he actively seeks out business opportunities throughout our region, identifying businesses that are growing to see if, you know, Batavia is the right fit for them for a new opportunity. And he also fulfills that role that we saw for the economic development manager was to be a concierge for business projects that come to Batavia so that they have that one point of contact, both when they first picked up the phone to say they wanted to locate our business here, but all the way through to, you know, ribbon cutting with our wonderful Chamber of Commerce. And then beyond that, as they contact him at the stages at which they want to grow their business, but still maintain it in Batavia. We also wanted to promote opportunities for downtown redevelopment, projects like One Washington Place, which shortly after we approved the strategic action plan disappeared altogether, unfortunately. And then the economic environment was not very suitable to those projects coming to fruition. We saw that, you know, just in this industry nationwide with the increase in the interest rates, the troubles with the supply chain, and then the increases in the cost of everything associated with construction. So we did advertise our downtown properties that were under our control, redevelopment opportunities. Unfortunately, we only received one response to that and haven't quite been able to make a project out of that. However, one of the things that we did during this period of time was complete the downtown plan. And I think that that really will do a good job to telegraph to the development community the types of things that we would like to see on various developable land within our downtown space. And that will make it less risky for a developer to invest in putting together a project to pitch to the city of Batavia when we can say that it conforms with exactly what our plans are for that. So I look forward to cultivating opportunities there. And then also continuing to implement aspects of the streetscape plan. Projects in this area include installing two new entryway signs and we have two more planned for this year. And engineering is underway for the catenary light project that is for North River Street as well as a decorative arch that is being designed and that will be installed between two properties. That's the Newspaper Boy Alley project. And then we recently completed the project to convert North River Street to one-way southbound, which puts the city under, in the control of being able to close that street. We'll have the flexibility to do that when we want to, eliminating those unsightly barricades that just looked like the street was always under construction. In the area of transportation, we continue to pursue implementation of a road diet on Route 31. It had been a pretty slow-moving project, although we were encouraged that IDOT seemed to be receptive to us completing a feasibility study to show that it would work on Route 31. And it's unfortunate that the fast track that it is on now was prompted by some tragic accidents that happened there. However, this project is still on track to get underway in the spring of this year. We recently just submitted responses to IDOT's comments to our first submittal. And so we, the next step should be getting our construction permit. There were several items in the current strategic plan that related to improvements to bike and pedestrian safety. And we incorporated all of those under item 2.3, which was to collaborate with the Batavia Bicycle Commission, or as they're now known, the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission. Fay-TAC, it's a long name. And we did accomplish that plan. In fact, we came up with a list of more than $3 million worth of projects that will be completed over the next 10 years. And we have added $300,000 per year of that plan to our budgets. And it, you know, if you go and take a look at the BikePed plan, you'll see that there are a list of projects and it specifically denotes what year which projects will be accomplished. Now, we may have some flexibility there. If we end up with a street project that needs to be constructed, but we didn't intend to make improvements to that street for two more years, we may move it up in, in priority and vice versa. But I think it's a very solid, specific plan that we can follow on a year-to-year basis and we won't find ourselves five years. and we won't find ourselves five years down the road not having accomplished much with it. So I really like the structure of it. And it's something else that we're going to put in clear plans so we can, the public can log in and see what our progress is on that as well. We also wanted to develop an infrastructure funding policy. And in 2021, Gary put together a spreadsheet of which projects that we were going to accomplish in years 1 to 5, 5 to 10, and beyond 10 years. And it proved to be a very useful tool for budgeting that we have to get back on track with having that be an annual meeting and a check-in with that spreadsheet to say, you know, what new projects need to go on there, and are we on track? We also reviewed our service level expectations due to rising costs, and the city council made the decision that, yes, we do want to keep our service level high, even if that means that we'll have to make a greater investment. And then, again, the enhanced safety of bikers and walkers was incorporated into the BikePed Plan. And then we had goals associated with our river, which is a central element to our community. The first was to create a master plan for the development of our riverfront, and that has been a long process. We are now at the point where we have a draft master plan, and we expect that that draft master plan will be coming back to city council as well as to the park board in order to approve that master plan. We, in terms of actively marketing riverfront properties, kind of discussed that back in 1.3 with the downtown plan. And inexpensive way that we found to capitalize on having the river there, our engineering department partnered with other organizations to coordinate annual river cleanup days, which literally got our residents into the river and activated with it. And then, over the course of this last strategic action plan, we also had a diversity objective to create and adopt a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. We chose to start with our own workforce first, and we formed a committee. And the committee was comprised of members from each department within our organization and people from all levels of our organization as well. In the beginning, we thought that we would engage in an employee survey of our DEI culture. From there, we would identify gaps and areas where we could improve and make recommendations, and then put that all into a plan, similar to our strategic action plans. But what we discovered when we started doing research into DEI is it's important to take a slower approach to this. At the same time that we were starting our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, the mayor's caucus had a program that was called LOR, and that's learning and operationalizing racial equity. And it was an opportunity for us to send two individuals, Wendy Benaric, our human resources director, and Anthony Isom, our economic development manager, to sessions over a six-month period of time. It was a big commitment of time on their part, but it was talking about the concepts of DEI and how to operationalize them within your organization. And it was also their recommendation to take things slow, make sure that the people who are going to be implementing this in your organization are very knowledgeable about it and take a very measured approach to it. It will have more long-lasting effects. And so we started a journey of learning more about DEI. And we're, what we have learned, we think, will allow us to roll out programs for the entire workforce. And so we have in this year's budget, a facilitator who will come in and is going to do a workshop with the leadership group, as well as the DEI committee first. And then the next plan is to host an all-employee meeting that will be about a half-day event. And at the end of that, will come that employee survey that we were talking about, after we've had some conversations about what DEI is and isn't and have a little bit more education under our belts. So, again, we feel like we've landed some very tangible results in the 2021 to 2023 plan. But I'm really excited about this next 2024 to 2028 plan, because I think that, number one, Max has done a wonderful job of facilitating the process. I love that we started with a vision and outcomes that we want to see rather than just general areas of goals that we were tackling. I think it has a lot more, you can see what our destination is in this new plan that's coming up. There's a lot, it's a lot. There's, you know, 75 different goals in there that we want to accomplish. But many of them are things that are just following a path that we've already started in these two past plans. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for your commitment to supporting the goals that we've been able to accomplish in this plan. Does anybody have any comments that they would like to make about it in terms of, you know, its effectiveness or? Yes?
How many years has the city been doing strategic action plans?
The 2021 to 2023 plan was the second three-year plan since I've been here. I think the previous plan, do you recall? There was a plan prior to me being here, but it had been, I think it had been many years before.
And one of the things that came out of earlier plans that we had was is that we had the plan, but we didn't have the responses back, you know, the benchmarks, when we did or didn't do things. It was just a plan, and then after there was not enough happening, there was another plan brought forward. And the last two have been really, I think, much more pointed to, okay, here's the plan, here's what we think we can do when, and then report back to us and let us know, you know? And we talk about what we have accomplished and what we haven't. You know, so that way, we benchmark all that stuff and have it available after you go through that plan, because a plan doesn't do much if you don't look at the results and ask yourself, well, why didn't this happen? You know, and was it personnel? Was it funding? Was, you know, what were the reasons behind it? And I think that that's the best thing that's come out of these last two, was that we do talk about it on a regular basis. You know, one of the things I was going to bring up was, you know, I hear the things that Anthony does, I hear it from the outside, you know, the involvement that he has. I'd like to at least quarterly have him back here in this room and report to us what he thinks is happening, what he has made as contacts. Because I think it's important for us to know from him where he thinks the progression of his job is, and what does it feel like to him from the out, you know, from the people from the outside? What do we, what do we need to know? You know, and just to have him here, go through that, say, hey, I've contacted 22 businesses, here's three, here's whatever the numbers are, and, you know, how he's helped that progress. Because I think that's something that we need to know.
I like that.
I'd follow up to that, too, when you were talking about the economic development component. I was like, and how can we help? Like, what is he out there doing? And what can we be doing to get word out or to tap into our own networks to help connect him with people? And, yeah, I would just echo what Alan said, too, that the accountability that was built in and the constant, you know, the regular reporting was so nice and helpful. And it's all I've ever known, so I can't imagine not having, you know, a council and a staff that were dedicated to following through on a plan. So I'm really appreciative that you put this all together for the past six years without a Max and led it and organized it.
So much easier with a Max.
Yeah, so kudos. I think it's really helped us make a lot of progress in a lot of really important areas, so.
Thank you very much. Alderman, Chance, that you have your hand raised?
Indeed, I would say in 14 years of being on council, I've seen all kinds of action plans and things that we're supposed to do, comprehensive plans, land use, and all those kinds of things. In the beginning, I'm not going to lie, it felt like feel-good stuff, stuff to strive for, but you could change your mind upon, and it wasn't that big a deal. You've added an accountability piece, you've added an action piece that we can see the results. I want to commend you and senior staff, and especially the recent hires that you made, people that have joined us. Max, your contribution is so evident through how you facilitated us. So thank you so much. This is something that we can hold ourselves accountable to and watch as the new memos come in. We can see where on the strategic action plan this thing is. And I guess my biggest complaint, looking back on discussions and late nights that we've had, remember those times that we spent an hour and a half talking about stamped concrete on a small piece of our downtown at a cost of $60,000, and it wasn't really even in the strategic plan? And then we would spend no time talking about something that had very big implications on cost. And this helps us keep things in perspective. I see only good things coming from all of this, so thank you.
Move on to project status.
Okay. This was another thing that Max helped us with. We're very excited to say we've been selected for the University of Illinois at Chicago Capstone Program, and they're going to be working with us on the initial stages of our utility infrastructure study that is one of the elements of our upcoming strategic action plan. And so as part of this, they're going to be reviewing past outages, electric loads, repairs, et cetera, and provide some guidance for additional research. And they're working closely with our electrical engineers, and they are people, the students who are working on it are masters in public administration students, but they come to us with backgrounds in engineering, military and security, and government relations and advocacy. So they're very well-suited to work on that project, and we're really excited. We just had a kickoff meeting this week for it. Community and economic development staff is reviewing the plans that have been submitted for the Ignite Medical Resort Project that's located at Deer Path Road and Main Streets. It was approved by city council in July of 2023, and permit applications were submitted at the end of December. Our downtown plan is in the final revision process. We anticipate an advisory committee meeting in late February with a final open house shortly thereafter. We just, last week, had a graduation of our LMI, the employees who attended the Labor and Management International Effective Personal Performance Course. That was the course offered to our aspiring leaders. As a matter of fact, Max was one of the students that was part of that cohort. But we also had members of our fire department, police department, IT, records technician, HR. And so it was an opportunity for people who don't ordinarily get to work together on a day-to-day basis to go through this course together. And they had some great things to say about the value that they gained from it. So we're proud of their accomplishments. And then also, last week, we had the pre-construction meeting for the Prairie and Wilson project, which is going to be a very big deal. And that's how we know that's one of our busiest intersections. So many people travel that way every day to get to where they are going. But the improvements are going to be, you know, really impactful there. It is going to be a signalized intersection. We're going to take care of those railroad crossings. They're actually going to have gates that come down, which will make them much safer, but also eliminate the need to blow the horns as they're coming through town as well, which I'm sure many people who live in that vicinity will greatly appreciate. So the contractor will start to deploy traffic control detours in late February so that construction can commence the first week of March. And Public Works team, the engineering department, are all communicating with the residents and the businesses in that area to make sure they are prepared for the changes that are coming. And also, I think I went over that in the strategic plan. That's it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
So Public Works will be prepared for the second or third winter in the first week of March when that kicks off?
I made the joke, I don't remember if I told city council or not, but it was prior to the holidays when Bill Cullum told us that winter was going to start on July, on January 8th. It was like two weeks in advance. And come January 8th, that's exactly when winter started. So far, he hasn't said when winter's going to restart again, so.
I just figured it would be as soon as we get out there and get all the detour signs up and the construction equipment shows up, and then we'll get another good storm.
We're going to get more snow.
I know.
I do have a question. With that construction project, you guys have been in touch with the school district, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's going to significantly impact the pickups and drop-offs and all of that.
Hopefully, they'll start communicating that soon.
Yes.
Well, I'm sure it'll change the busing routes, and all kinds of stuff will change with that.
Yeah, maybe not the best community decision to locate the high school on one side of town and the junior high on the other side of town, but that's history at this point.
That's a lot of towns.
Where's that drone to carry people?
Yeah.
With the Prairie Street, Wilson, construction, are they going to be putting gates on the other two road crossings?
On the Wilson and?
But not in the neighborhoods?
No.
Okay. So the horns will still have to blow to cross those?
Yeah, there'll still be, there'll still be horns.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
Prairie and Wilson, sorry, Prairie and the railroad tracks, Wilson and the railroad tracks, they'll both be getting gates, the other crossings.
The other ones, okay.
Do you have any others tonight? Okay. No others, then we'll have a motion. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of land for sale?
Second.
Selfie and Lehman, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, we will go into executive session.